I'd like to call to order the Town Council Workshop on Renewable Energy. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Counselor Gerlach.
Present.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Shabbitt.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Rodrick.
Present.
Counselor DiMaderis.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier is not here yet.
Before we begin, I just want to do a little housekeeping. We have tried to limit the amount of time, just so that we can get as much in. Mr. Plunkett, around five, six minutes. The Planning Board Chair, Steve Hughes, and Kate Michaud, around 15 minutes. The Water Authority is about 15 minutes. Presentation by Chris Swartley, about 15 minutes. Presentation by Stephen Wallenberg and the group, 15 minutes. Other renewable energy options, 15 minutes. And then at the very end, before adjournment, we'll have a brief, open discussion and planning of the next steps, so that rather than everybody getting up and speaking on each point, when we get after the last presentation, then there will be an open discussion. Again, limited, and I don't want people to just keep berating because this is a workshop. This is for us to hear ideas and to hear what is going on. So with that said, I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you very much, council members. It's very gratifying to know that wind energy is still on the table, still being considered. It's very gratifying that you still let me come up and talk to you. And to only have five minutes, that's really gratifying. It's such a change to have everybody here that are part of this game, and I think that's a really important step that we've made. And that this is perhaps the beginning of a Tiverton plan. I know I've been working with the East Bay Energy Consortium for all these years, but the one thing that was, I think psychologically, if nothing else, is that was somebody else's plan. And maybe this is the beginning of our plan, the one we designed for Tiverton only. I would like to remind you of one thing that came out of the East Bay Energy Consortium, and I said that the last time I was up here, and that's the wind data. That is an extremely important asset to a potential wind project. It means that you don't have to wait a year to get the wind data if you decide to move forward. It also means that the risk factor in revenue projections and all the planning that's required is a lot tighter, so that the financing and so on and the interest of developers will be stronger because they know exactly what they're dealing with, I mean, as much as science can tell them. So that's, we're already a big step forward, and that's one thing that E-BEC got for us. Couple of points before we move into the real part of the program, I think. I think we have to keep in mind that the industrial park is just one property that could be developed for renewable energy. In fact, if you recall, the feasibility study for E-BEC probably would have resulted in only a couple of machines on the industrial park property, and the remainder of them would have been on the Water Authority properties. And frankly, there are some other properties that could potentially be in the game. So this is not, I mean, obviously, as far as the council's concerned, the industrial park is the main focus, and regardless of what happens, the council would have to approve the zoning that would be required for any project, but it's not the only, it's not the only game, or the only parcel. I'd also like to, for you to keep in mind, that the one, in the 30 years we've been doing this, the one success story has been an energy production company. And they came looking for that parcel, regardless of who owned it, and the same things that made it attractive for them makes it attractive today for renewable energy. That's a source of power and good connection to the grid. So I think, I think our goal here tonight is to learn a lot, listen to all the various viewpoints, and then to come to some consensus at the end on a way forward. I've taken the liberty of drafting a potential plan of action forward, just for discussion that we might want to consider at the end of, at the end of the presentations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Plunkett. Okay. Planning Board Chair, Steve Hughes, and Kate Michaud.
Hi, Kate. Flying solo.
Yes, Mr. Hughes could not make it tonight, and he sends his apologies. But I am here just to give a very quick, little bit of history just on the wind ordinance and how we came about to where we are today. I'll be very brief. February of 2010, there was a turbine proposal on a residential property. Came to everyone's attention that we didn't have any ordinance in place for turbines. The Planning Board recommended a six-month moratorium pending adoption of regulations to give time to come up with some regulations. That moratorium was approved by the Town Council on February 8, 2010. Later on in February, the Planning Board formed a subcommittee to study the issue and draft an ordinance. In April 2010, the Planning Board unanimously recommended a draft ordinance for adoption for the Town, by the Town Council. And then in June 14, 2010, the Town Council had a public hearing on that ordinance. There was a lot of discussion at that hearing, and the Town Council voted unanimously to send the draft ordinance back to the Planning Board for further review, for further consideration regarding noise and setback requirements, and specifically to look at whether or not there should be separate requirements for residential districts versus commercial or industrial districts. After a lot of back and forth, in March of 2011, the Planning Board voted to table the issue pending the issuance of guidance from the state. There were guidelines pending from statewide planning, and the Planning Board thought that that would be a good resource document, and it was best to wait for those guidelines to be issued. And to this day, as far as I know, we don't have those guidelines yet. They're draft versions, but they haven't been finalized up at the state. So that's basically where we are right now. The moratorium is in effect until an ordinance is adopted. So just if you want me to give you a two-minute status on the industrial park, I have the plans over there. The plan to the left is the existing conditions of the park, just for anyone who's interested. The plans on the right is the subdivision plan that's been recorded, it's on record. It's 67 lot subdivisions, 66 of those lots are buildable. And you'll see on there the layout that has been recorded and is on record. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions? The Water Authority is Paul Northrup, North Tiverton Fire District; Frank Reposa, Stonebridge Fire District. Status on negotiation with Apex, WRT Wind Turbines on their watershed parcels.
May I go ahead, Frank?
If you'd like to sit, you can sit. If you're more comfortable.
Don't want to take too much of your time, don't want to get too comfortable. Mr. President, and members of the Town Council, and Mr. Goncalo, thank you for giving us the opportunity to give you some thoughts pertaining to wind energy development in Tiverton. My name is Paul Northrup, Treasurer of North Tiverton Fire District, and with me tonight is Mr. Paul St. Lawrence, our General Manager. And just before I begin, I'd like to say I'm particularly thankful to Mr. Gerlach for taking lead on this issue and the important staff at Pond Fishing Tournament issue. Thank you. But I prepared a statement, which I emailed to Mr. Gerlach. Have you had a chance to look at it? I don't want to, no? Okay.
It's in the package.
Okay. North Tiverton Fire District and Stonebridge Fire District first met with representatives of the East Bay Energy Consortium, E-BEC, and Apex Wind Energy in September of 2011 to discuss the feasibility of wind energy development in Tiverton. North Tiverton Fire District owns three parcels of land just south of the industrial park and west of land owned by Stonebridge Fire District that E-BEC and Apex seriously considered for wind energy development. The North Tiverton three parcels total 148 acres. After listening to E-BEC and Apex proposals back in 2011 and careful consideration, the North Tiverton Fire District Administrative Board and management unanimously concluded that a private developer would be more advantageous for a number of reasons, which included experienced personnel for environmental engineering, equipment procurement, construction engineering, operation management, financing, and lower risk. Lower risk meaning a private developer would be responsible for any risk going forward. In the prepared statement I had, I also wrote some comments about my experience with the industrial park, going back to when I was Town Manager in the early 90s, and how accompanied by the name of VMI came in, which is now Tiverton Power Associates with a gas-fired But I'm going to, due to the recent interest in the industrial park, I'll eliminate those two paragraphs. I just don't want anything getting in the press, which may be construed as being negative to the park, if you understand. But that's the reason I asked if you had that statement that I had written. You can make a part of the record if you wish, but I just don't, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to comment it publicly. A 2011 survey of Tiverton taxpayers with 990 respondents is favorable toward pursuing further study of wind energy. In addition to providing fire protection, North Tiverton Fire District is committed to the distribution of quality water and spends significant amounts of money each year to maintain and upgrade its infrastructure. Our current five-year plan reflects a need, I had said, double the historical financial commitment. Looking at that five-year plan as recently as today, that figure is going to be more than double. We're going to have to significantly pump more money into the North Tiverton Water District infrastructure. The Apex Wind proposal is perhaps a $50 to $60 million investment. Revenue from the generation of electricity, electricity and tangible property taxes will help reduce the long-term burden on North Tiverton Fire District customers. The current status of North Tiverton and Apex as of today is that we've agreed to the terms and language of a lease agreement and have signed a letter of intent to sign that agreement. The only reason we have not signed that agreement is Stonebridge had their attorney working on the agreement, which I will let Mr. Reposa comment on. I think they're satisfied with it. And another piece of the puzzle is the town of Tiverton and how that fits into the puzzle. So that's where we stand today. Any questions?
My name is Frank Reposa, with the moderator of the Stonebridge Fire District, and we are in negotiations with Apex. Serious negotiation. We've, for the past three or four years, we've had proponents for wind energy come before us, but Apex seems to have a good plan. We have, and this is their, Chris will tell you, Chris Swartley, that this is their first endeavor in a watershed, a true watershed. And as you know, Stonebridge has all that land right along the western shore of the pond. So we just want to make sure everything is right. And that's where we stand in negotiations with them. They know what we want, we know what they're looking for, and as soon as we have more information that we can present to you, we will get back. That's where it stands.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Northrup. Thank you, Mr. Reposa. Presentation by Chris Swartley, Vice President of Project Development, Apex Clean Energy.
Thank you. I have a presentation here to assist me, so. I am Vice President of Project Development for Apex Wind Energy. Thank you for hosting this event tonight to discuss wind energy, and thank you to Mr. Gerlach for heading up this effort for the board. A few words about Apex, just so you know who we are. Apex is a relatively young company, founded in 2009. But an important thing to note about Apex is that our founders and our senior management all have at least 10 to 20 years of experience in the wind industry. And so although we're a young company, we've got a lot of experience under our belts in the development and the construction and the financing, in the operations of wind farm projects. My background is that I've been in wind for about 12 years. A lot of my career was spent at a company called First Wind, based in Boston, where I headed up development for wind projects in the Northeast. I joined Apex about a year ago to head up, head up development in, for the Northeast for Apex. My, our office for the Northeast is in Portland, Maine, and I live just north of there in Yarmouth, Let's see, another couple of things about Apex. We just completed our first project, 300-megawatt project in Oklahoma. It's the largest single-phase project in Oklahoma at this point, which is, you know, it's quite a, quite an accomplishment for a young company, considering the resources and the expertise and the complexity of these projects to, to have up and running such a large wind farm in such a short time. Apex's business is to develop, construct, and operate wind farms. And the reason I say that is that when we look to come into a community and work on a wind farm with a community, our view is that we're going to be there, provided that things go successfully, that we're going to be there for 20 to 30 years. You know, two to four years for the development, six months for the construction, and then 20 to 30 years for the operation, at least in the first phase. So we really, you know, we see this in the relationships we start to build and the way in which we communicate with folks as part of a, you know, as the very start of a long-term engagement. Oh yeah, one more thing about Apex is we're headquartered, headquartered in Charlottesville, Virginia, and we have offices throughout the country. A little bit about our capabilities. We have all the in-house capabilities to, to develop a wind farm. We, we cover all the, all the functional specialties, including the GIS work for, for site selection, screening, those kind of things. Resource assessment, we have both a climatologist and meteorologist who are very well adept with meteorological models, MET tower and SODAR data. We have experts in transmission and interconnection to help us through, in this case would be with the Independent System Operator of New England. We have a great project development team. Our, our team has done about $10 billion worth of successful projects. So developed, developed projects, brought them to finance, construction, and operation, $10 billion as a whole. We have a lot of experience in procuring turbines and other equipment, about 3.5 billion. Construction engineering, asset management. Once the, you know, once the wind farm is operational, you have the, you have the operations and maintenance of it and the management of that asset for, for investors. We've got deep experience in that. And environmental affairs, we have a wildlife biologist on staff who, who both does direct work on projects and manages environmental consultants that we hire. On the financing side, our financing team has done about $22 billion in structured finance transactions. Wind farms typically, wind farms are typically built based on what's called structured project finance, which brings in, which brings in debt from commercial banks. Right now, with a production tax credit, it brings in tax equity, it brings in equity, and it finances a project over a 15- to 18-year period. This is a very efficient, efficient way of using large amounts of capital to get a, to get a project done. Let's see, what else? We also do some development finance. We bring in some financial institutions to finance some of our development of wind farms, so that we can be as efficient as possible of what we do, in what we do, and develop the right number of projects. We also do a lot of acquisitions of projects. We've grown as a company through acquisitions of other companies' projects. That being said, when we develop a project, we also hire local and regional firms, because even though we have in-house expertise, there are particularities in a region, in environmental affairs, in, in engineering, interconnection, legal, and land. And so, for example, one of the things we've done as a part of our investigation of this potential project is to do a high-level critical issues analysis to look at the various environmental factors of doing a project in Tiverton. We hired ESS Group out of East Providence to do that. I've worked with ESS Group for a long time. I worked with them when I was at First Wind. They're, they're a great organization. They've done a lot of work with power plants and other infrastructure projects in Rhode Island, Massachusetts. And so we contracted with them to do the critical issues analysis. This is just a little bit of the background of our people. I was saying that, you know, we're a young company, but we have deep experience in, in the renewables and energy industry. These are some of the companies that, that many of us have come from. And also, the map shows a couple of things. The blue states are where we are presently developing projects. The gray states are where members of our management team have had experience successfully completing projects. And then the other, the other dots are either offices for Apex, or they are there where we have regional representatives. And so that's just to show that, as a company, we've, we've been involved or are involved with every major wind or renewable market in the country. And again, a couple, I'll just go through this kind of quickly, because I know, I know time is precious in this meeting, but just some of the, some of the projects that have been completed either by Apex or the company, or some of the development management folk who work for Apex. So, an update. I believe Carlos Povasils, about a year and a half ago, addressed, addressed the Town Board and the Fire Districts, and we haven't really been, we reached out to the Town Board through Mr. Gerlach probably two or three months ago, but we haven't been too much in touch with the Town Board at this point. And so I wanted to give the Board a, an update on what we've been doing. On the land side, we've been working with Stonebridge and North Tiverton Fire Districts to lease land for wind turbines. And as, as, as Mr. Northrup and Mr. Reposa expressed, that's been a, that's been a very involved process, because they, of course, have a duty and care very much about the watershed. And so there's been a lot of back and forth. How do we, you know, how do we, how do we site wind turbines in a watershed in a way that minimizes any impact to the watershed, but still allows for the benefits of having wind turbines? And so we've been, we've been hard at work negotiating at least with them, and we're, you know, I think we're getting there. On the environmental side, I said we contracted with the ESS, ESS Group to produce a preliminary environmental assessment, which found no fatal flaws. Of course, when you have tall wind turbines, there's going to be, you know, you're going to see them, so you need to study that. There's plenty of environmental things you need to study, birds, bats, endangered species, so on and so forth, wetlands, flora and fauna. But the report found that there was, there was no one thing that would make a project impossible in this area. And so that was, that was a good, good piece of knowledge, knowledge for us in, in understanding the risk of, of contemplating doing a project here, gave us some comfort. With interconnection, we've been working with RLC Engineering and also the Independent System Operator of New England, which, which is the grid operator. And while we haven't formally entered the interconnection process, by doing some preliminary studies with those parties, we've found that the 115-kilovolt system in this area, and specifically the substation that's across Route 24 from, from the Town and Fire District to land, can handle a, a project of the rough size that we're contemplating. And I should say, you know, at this point, we can only really talk rough, rough size because there's still a lot of questions about land and permitting issues, which we haven't had conversations about. But to give, to give you all a general sense, we're, you know, we'd like to think of a project in the range of six to eight turbines, which would be 18 to 24 megawatts. So don't, you know, don't, don't hold me to that, because there's, there's a lot more discussion that would need to happen and a lot more we would need to learn about the area, about permitting and everything. But that's a, that's just a rough figure to start the conversation with. Lastly, our, our resource analysis team has analyzed area data, data from meteorological towers and also the models we possess, and we've concluded that there is a, there is viable wind resource, considering what power prices are in New England. So, and also, as Gary mentioned with the, you know, it is valuable that you all have a meteorological tower already up. There's nothing like having that kind of wind data on site. So, so that's a valuable, you know, that's a valuable asset for, for the town and for the area. Going forward, so this is, this is a possible picture, again, just to start the conversation. This Gantt chart includes the major pieces of wind farm development and a rough timeframe of what each of those pieces would take. The actual timeframe would depend on, on the various stakeholders and participants involved in the permitting and interconnection work. And that, you know, that, that kind of final timeframe only develops as, as various stakeholders get engaged in the process. But, but what we've sketched out here is starting by securing land over a four- to five-month period, also some pre-development engagement with the town, talking further about the project in forums like this and in other ways. If it looks like this is something that the town would be interested in moving forward with, we would commence environmental studies. And, you know, generally, they could take a year, but depending on, on the permitting, they could take a year and a half. After the environmental studies happen, then the permitting can really happen based on, and, you know, permitting being evaluating the wind project based on what's been found in the studies, evaluating basically the impacts and the benefits of hosting a wind farm. Interconnection studies, they are done with utility and with the Independent System Operator, and they generally take two years, although that could be, that, it can be less than that, depending on whether, on how. on whether, on how many projects are in a particular area. Power sales, that's something we start early in a project's lifecycle. It's important to get with the utilities, get with power marketers early in the game so that when you get to the end of permitting, you can get into your power contracts and finance the project. And really, the financing is all based on getting a credit-worthy power contract. It's that long-term contract that gives banks the comfort to loan the project money over 15 to 18 years, and allows us to put in place a really efficient capital structure to run the wind farm. And then, you know, construction roughly two years from now and commercial operations. And again, this, you know, this could move up, this could move back depending on how things play out in the future. Just a couple of things about building wind farm. First, setting up the office and other facilities, surveying the project sites, taking the roads, then constructing access roads, and excavating and constructing turbine foundations. Next is trenching the cables, finally erecting the turbines, and then the interconnection connecting the, the wind turbines are connected with one another via underground 34.5 kilovolt lines. And then, all of that is brought together and it's taken to a substation. In this case, we see the best alternative as being the substation that's on the other side of Route 24. It's a 115 slash, I think, 12.47 kilovolt substation. Just a little bit about wind in the United States. All 50 states are involved with the wind industry, either by having projects or by having manufacturing for project components and other things. Wind energy is abundant and home-burned resource, reduces our dependence on imported fuels, doesn't pollute air or water, and provides economic growth to local communities and add to tax revenue. Benefits for Tiverton, and a little bit about these benefits. We've used our experience, our construction team's experience, and also an economic development model called the JDI Model. It was produced by the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. At this point, this is a very general model, and so it gives a ballpark sense of what the benefits are. But as the process goes on again, and we become more clear exactly how, you know, if a project went forward, when we got a sense of exactly the size of the project and the permitting timeframe and all of those things, we would be able to get much more specific about the economic benefits. So, roughly, lease payments to landowners, this assumes eight turbines would be roughly $8 million during the life of the project, that's over 30 years. Tax revenues to the town. My understanding is that Revillan has a number of ways of treating large projects like this, whether it's strict assessment or a pilot program or something like that. And that's something that if this moved forward, we would speak with the town about and figure out the best way for all parties to go about the tax situation. However, just to ballpark it, you know, we're talking between a 15 and 60 million dollar projects. That gives you a sense of the asset that is there for discussion regarding taxes. $2.6 million in local purchasing of goods and services due to wind farm construction, and about $400,000 per year of local purchasing of goods and services for operations. And that's Newport County, Providence County, so it's kind of local, defined by the model. It's really county and regional. As far as employment, during construction, this would hire approximately 33 people. It would hire full-time jobs, it would hire seven people for the operations and maintenance job. It's our policy to hire and train locally. It's one of the, you know, it's one of the areas where we find that we can help create as much kind of local value as we can. Nine full-time jobs created and/or maintained in Rhode Island through supply chain impacts, multiplier effects during development. That's the model's way of saying, when we develop this project, we're going to be hiring local and regional consultants, lawyers, professional services firms, and that's a rough computation of the number of jobs that the development would create. The same thing with construction. It's going to create roughly 234 full-time jobs during the construction, again, through the increased economic activity, through the spending for the project, through the spending of the construction workers of the project. And then, during the operations, six full-time jobs created or maintained, again, through the multiplier effect of the seven people hired for operations and maintenance jobs. And then, below is a table which shows rough salaries in this market for these types of jobs, for both construction labor and operations and maintenance labor. And I'll make this presentation available to the board so you can review it at your Questions about wind? I would say the most frequently asked questions that come up are the visuals. So, as a part of the permitting studies we do, we do visual assessments. This is a visual assessment of the Cohocton Wind Farm in New York, which is one of the wind farms I completed, 125-megawatt wind farm. And what you do is you take pictures from a number of areas around a community, generally areas where people think are of high scenic importance or impact. And then, you have the turbine model, turbine height, all of those things, a computer generates a view of what the wind farm will look like from that vantage point. Sound, another thing that people often ask about, we do sound studies. Sound studies take into account the amount of sound that the turbines produce, what the topography is, what the vegetation is, what the prevailing winds are, and they compute all this, and they give a detailed analysis of what the, how much the sound, how much sound the turbines will produce by distance from the turbines. So, that allows us then to do a layout that complies with local state regulations, so on and so forth. And then, also environmental studies. We do extensive environmental studies, wildlife, wetlands, avian habitat, avian effects. I talked a little bit about that, cultural, historical studies. So that, by the time the permitting comes around, there is a, you know, pretty large volume of studies and information for the permitting authority to be able to weigh, sorry, don't mean to lose you behind the column, for the permitting authority to really be able to weigh the impacts and the benefits of the project. And that's all. That's actually the Cohocton Wind Farm. That's not a visual sim, that's actually a picture soon after it was built. And there's my contact information. Again, I'll make this available to the board. I can email it to you, Bill, as I, sure.
No, 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 no. Email it to the town clerk.
Great, well, thank you, thank you for your time.
Just have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
The project in Oklahoma. How long did that take from inception to completion?
For the construction or for the development?
Development, construction, and completion.
The development took, let's see, started it in, I believe the development took about four years. And then, we started construction in the summer of last year and completed it like December 20th of 2012. And that is actually, that's actually a project that we acquired from somebody who had started the development, and then we worked with them to complete the project, construct it, and then took it from there.
So, basically, that was the first project that Apex had their hands in, as opposed to assuming or purchasing another completed project?
Yeah.
So, that was your first foray, as they say, even though you have the experience with your colleagues?
Yeah, as a corporate entity, as Apex, that was the first, Canadian Hills is the first project that we can say we completed as a company, although, you know, as me and other senior folks at Apex, we've been doing this for a long time and have a large number of projects under our belt.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Swale.
Okay, thank you.
Our next presentation by Stephen Rollenberg, Green Energy Program Director, People's Power and Light Renewable Energy Credits Program.
Hi, so first, thanks for having me here. Do you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, great. So, I can spend a little bit of time talking about renewable energy certificates and the significance that they might mean for this project, but frankly, the significance of renewable energy credits are really only going to be important for the town if the town were to decide to develop and own the project itself. So, I think that what might be helpful, and feel free to stop me or move me along at any point, but I think that what might be helpful is to talk a little bit more about our experience working with other municipalities as they have developed wind and other renewable energy projects, and a couple of lessons that might come to bear as Tiverton moves forward with this project. So, if that works for you guys. So, People's Power and Light, just to give you a little background, People's Power and Light is about a 30-year-old nonprofit. We have an office in Providence and another office in Boston. We have a mission of making energy more affordable and environmentally sustainable. So, to that end, we do a couple of different things, the most pertinent of which is we run a voluntary green power program. So, basically, what that means is that we work with developers, municipalities, basically anyone that's looking at putting in renewable energy, and we work with them to help basically develop their finances by purchasing the wrecks that we were talking about before through these long-term contracts. We also do consulting with municipalities or businesses that are looking at putting in renewables, to help them evaluate their options, figure out what might make the most sense for them, help them negotiate their way through contracts, that sort of thing. So, that's a little bit about what we do. So, we have experience with a number of different projects, both projects in Portsmouth, one for better, one less so. Sandywoods, actually, we purchase all of the renewable energy certificates from the turbine at Sandywoods Farm right now. And then, a host of different projects across Massachusetts. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of those projects later on. So, to give a little bit more context, and again, I think that for the purposes of right now, I won't presume that the only option on the table is what Apex has put forward, although obviously, that's a very attractive option. I think that it's important to kind of keep your minds open a little bit about what might be possible. So, really quickly, just to talk about the incentive programs in Rhode Island and their status right now, because that potentially will really help inform what kind of a project that could be developed. So, for a project of the size that Apex is talking about, the energy, which is going to be one of the largest sources of revenue for a project, the energy would probably have to be sold into the wholesale market or to a, basically, an energy off-taker. So, that could be a distribution company like National Grid. It could be an energy company like Hess or a bunch of different companies that might be interested in purchasing the energy. For smaller projects, though, Rhode Island has basically two different incentive programs, both of which are really, I'm sure you're familiar with, but again, I think it's important to just keep them in mind. So, basically, there's net metering, and that essentially allows developer or owner of a turbine to get retail, the retail value of the energy. So, you know, if you were paying 13 cents per kilowatt hour for your energy, net metering allows you to get 13 cents. There are some size restrictions there. The statute does allow more flexibility for municipalities. So, that's one option that would be on the table. Another one is the Distributed Generation Standard Contracts Program. That's a program that went into effect in about 2010, and it's currently set to expire at the end of 2014. That project, or excuse me, that program basically sets a fixed price depending on the size and technology of the project. And that price is essentially, excuse me, a ceiling is set for it by the Office of Energy Resources to make sure that no one's getting too much money, and then prices are bid competitively. Again, that has size restrictions, and it will end in 2014. It may not end up making a lot of sense for a wind project in Tiverton, but it could make a lot of sense if Tiverton were to consider also putting in solar or something else at the industrial park. So, it's something to keep in mind. And there's also, I would say, a fair chance that it could be expanded in years to come because it's proven to be remarkably effective in driving down prices. And then, finally, all of this is happening within the context of federal incentives for renewable energy. All of those incentives essentially come in the form of tax incentives. That's important because it means that really, any developer to have a competitive proposal has to have a tax appetite. That means that were the town to, and I'll talk again about this a little bit in more detail a little bit later, but were the town to decide that it wanted to try to own some of the projects itself, that puts the town at a bit of a disadvantage because the town obviously doesn't have the tax appetite to take advantage of those federal incentives. The other reason that I mention it is because currently, the largest incentive, the investment tax credit, the production tax credit, is set to expire at the end of this year. It's important to consider because ultimately, when we talk about what revenue might be available to the town, that's going to have to come out of the revenue that's available to the developer. So, if the developer doesn't have this federal incentive available to it, that's small or lease payments or however, pilot payments, however revenue's getting passed on to the town, it kind of reduces the size of the pie, of the pot that's available. So, it's worth keeping an eye on how that changes. So, again, just kind of drawing on our experience working with municipalities, we find that one of the most important things to do right off the bat is to establish what the goals are. And we see that these vary tremendously for different municipalities. And I think it's worth considering in Tiverton what the goals for this project might be. So, those might be things like just maximizing revenue for the town, whether that comes through lease payments, pilot payments, one way or the other, just make sure that the town gets as much money out of the project as it can. Another might be to minimize risk. So, you know, maximizing those benefits to the town might introduce some element of the risk. So, there's frequently a balancing act that has to be played there. The town might be trying to reduce its energy costs, it might be trying to stabilize its energy costs. So, some municipalities have found that developing renewable energy projects is a great way, even if they can't reduce dramatically their energy costs, to fix them so that they can plan their budgets around them, not just for the next year, but essentially for the next 25 years. And that may be something that Tiverton's interested in and something to keep in mind. And then, of course, there are other things, environmental accolades, education for the local schools, that sort of thing. So, again, really establishing those goals will inform the kind of project that ends up happening ultimately. So, it's really important to know that everyone's on the same page there. A couple of notes on process that we've also kind of run into working with other towns. Transparency is always key. It makes the difference for a number of different reasons. Because of EBEC, because of the survey that was distributed in 2011, because of meetings like this, Tiverton's already kind of way ahead of the ball on transparency, but it's important to try to maintain that as much as possible. Communicating with the closest residents, again, all of these things sound very obvious, but they're really, really critical, and you'd be surprised how frequently towns fail to address them and how that leads to problems. But communicating with neighbors as early and as frequently as possible, again, makes a huge amount of difference. We found that ensuring that people feel like they know what's going on and feel like they have input on the process really can have a big impact on how they ultimately feel about whatever project ends up happening. Planning for turnover, this is a really important one that people often overlook. In figuring out what resources or what expertise the town might have to contribute to the ultimate development of a project, consider that these are likely to be 20- or 25-year projects. So, you know, you guys are really lucky to have Bill right now, who's really interested and a big proponent of this project and brings expertise and interest, but it's worth considering that you want to make sure that you're setting up a project that can continue to succeed with turnover in the event that you no longer have staff or counselors that have that level of expertise and interest. of expertise and interest. Ultimately, a really well-designed RFP is one of the best things that you can do. So if the town, you know, basically decides it wants to pursue a specific project, having a well-designed, well-distributed RFP is important. An error that municipalities often make is they have a poorly-defined RFP. So they get responses from developers that simply can't be compared to each other because they allow too much latitude for the developer to propose different approaches to a project. So that's another thing to keep in mind. I was going to talk a little bit about municipal ownership versus third-party ownership. My sense is that the town is probably leaning towards municipal, excuse me, third-party ownership as opposed to the town itself owning and developing the project. And, you know, again, that's something that I could speak to a little bit more, but ultimately, for a project of the size that Apex is talking about, third-party development is probably going to make the most sense, especially because of the tax issues that I was talking about. So finally, I just thought I'd talk through a couple of examples that we've worked with. The first one I wanted to talk about was Gloucester, Massachusetts. So Gloucester, Massachusetts currently has three 1.5-megawatt turbines that have been developed in their town. They've had essentially no complaints. The turbines have been operating really, really well. We worked with Gloucester a little bit in the development phase, but we also have signed a long-term contract to purchase their wrecks, just so you know what our involvement in the project is. And that's actually going to be true of all of the examples that I'm going to give right now. So Gloucester, back in about 2009, essentially realized that they had a lot of windy sites in their town, and they initiated a search for a good site. Ultimately, the best site in town ended up being one that was privately owned, but because the town was so out ahead of this, they worked very, very closely with the owner of that parcel and with the ultimate developer throughout the entire process. Part of that close relationship was the ability of Gloucester to really inform not only how the project would be developed, but also how it would be operated. One of the concerns that the towns and a couple of residents had were that they might be impacted by flicker from the turbines. That's, again, something that I'm sure we've all heard about. Because they worked so closely together with all of the residents, one of the town counselors actually really took it upon himself to essentially go door-to-door to almost everybody that was anywhere near the turbine, which was, I think, one of the reasons that the project was so successful. But responding to some of those concerns about flicker, basically, in some of the contracts between the city and the developer, they got the developer to agree to voluntarily curtail the turbines during conditions that they know would produce flicker at a local middle school. So that's just a good example of how a close relationship with the developer and really being involved in the process can result in a project that's really, really operating in everyone's best interest. Ultimately, the city signed a power purchase agreement, or PPA, to purchase all of the energy that was produced by the project. What they negotiated was a 20% discount, excuse me, a 20, yes, a 20% discount on the first 9 million kilowatt hours that was produced, which is almost the entire, the town's entire energy consumption, and then a 75% discount on anything in excess of that. So that's likely to save the town about $11 million over the course of the project. It's a 25-year contract that they have. This is a really good example, and as it turns out, there's actually a meeting with a lot of the key people from the Gloucester project on Wednesday. It's at 2:00. I know most of you would not be able to make something like that, but if you're interested, you can get in touch with me, and I can tell you about the specifics of that. It's a great opportunity to learn about a successful project. Hull is an example. Hull, Massachusetts is a pretty obvious example of municipal ownership. And it's worth mentioning that for most projects, wind projects in Massachusetts that are owned by a municipality, that municipality is also a municipal light district, which means that they have more expertise and personnel to deal with infrastructure like a wind turbine. So I think that kind of speaks to what the relative merits of a private versus a publicly-owned project might be. But again, Hull was the first commercial-scale wind turbine on the East Coast. They put up their project in 2003. It was so popular that a 97% referendum in the town led them to construct a second wind turbine, which has been just as successful. The town, because it's a municipal light district, they see the benefits directly because that's energy that the municipality would otherwise be purchasing from the wholesale market. Hull worked with Vestas, which is a very reputable turbine manufacturer for both of its projects. It's had a couple of pretty small issues with its smaller turbine, but working with that reputable manufacturer, they've worked through them really, really effectively. Finally, Ipswitch, and I chose Ipswitch because they've actually done both kinds of projects. So they have two 1.5-megawatt projects, one of which is owned by the town and one of which is on town-owned land but is owned by a third-party developer. Basically, they developed their own wind project first, the municipally-owned project. It was tremendously successful. About 80% of the residents of the town voted in favor of a second turbine. They decided that it was a lot of work to get the first project up and running, and they didn't really want to do a second bond issue, so they opted to go with a third-party private developer. That was a pretty quick project, and in that project, again, most of the revenue to the town came in the form of stable and discounted electricity prices, some through the lease payments and the pilot payments, but primarily from electricity savings. So that's a pretty good example of how things can go as well. Finally, given what you see when you look out at the water there, I think it's, I might address a couple of lessons that one might take up from the town of Portsmouth. Again, most of these are obvious, but I think they're worth highlighting. So the first one is that price should not be the only criterion on which a proposal is offered. So were you to put a project out to RFP, you want to make sure that you're not just considering benefits to the town, but also other things that might basically dictate how the project operates and how much of a quality project it is. Most of the lessons learned, frankly, are most pertinent for a project that would be owned by the municipality, so I can kind of skip through them pretty quickly. Warranty is only going to be as good as the company that offers it. Portsmouth purchased from a very young company that went bankrupt unfortunately pretty quickly. The town of Portsmouth is now considering production insurance, basically to try to minimize their risk. Until recently, much like healthcare, insurance is a lot easier to purchase before something goes wrong. So that's another important thing to keep in mind. It's really important to evaluate the credentials of the company that you're working with. There have been some questions about the qualifications of the O&amp;M provider that Portsmouth worked with, even if you were to pursue a project that would be owned by a third-party developer. Again, you really want to make sure that you're considering their credentials, their experience, their financial viability in the long term, and those are all things to consider during an RFP. And finally, again, planning for turnover and staffing, I think, is really, really important. So I tried to cover a lot of material in a pretty short period of time, but I'm happy to answer any questions now or after you've had a little bit of time to digest or after the discussion that will follow. So thanks for your time, and look forward to hearing from you soon.
Thank you. Other renewable energy options: solar, tidal, biomass, commercial interests and requirements.
Mr. President, there was really no one to talk to this only on the agenda to really point out that while much of the conversation historically has revolved around wind, we would be remiss to not also consider other forms of renewable energy, kind of given our particular geography and topography. Certainly, other types of renewable energy such as solar, tidal, and biomass certainly come into play here, and I think it's safe to say, and Kate can keep me honest here, that, you know, there are no ordinances on the books to deal with any of these. So, you know, as we consider additional, you know, steps to look at the future here, you know, it may be worth our while to try to get out ahead of these things by considering ordinances that either deal with not just wind, but other types of renewable energies, so that we could potentially be ready if and when, you know, a development opportunity came before us. So that's really it in a nutshell.
All right, thank you. I mean, overall, I think everyone has done an exceptional job in providing us with information. Those of us who've been around a little longer than others have seen the saga of wind energy in Tiverton and know that it's a long journey. There's a lot of questions that need to be answered, and this is, again, another beginning step. We've, as they say in baseball, we've thrown the first pitch, but I don't know if we're out of the first inning yet. So I think there's a lot that the council needs to understand. I think we also need to understand what the water authorities are planning in more depth, unable to, if we're going to work in conjunction with them rather than have competing ideas and things like that, I think we need to probably have a meeting with the water authorities and see what the concept is, what can we do as a council, what are our options on land that is adjacent to, and, you know, rather than trying to put together a project that's piecemeal or, you know, going to have, end up with like two freestanding when we could have had six, or end up with eight when we should have only had four. So I think we need to sit down and speak with the, you know, the water authorities, and I'm sure that you guys are amenable to, you know, maybe we can plan something and, you know, just have a little meeting, you know, with the council and the water authorities. I know Mr. Plunkett has been down this road numerous times, and he's provided this town with unbelievable information. And I believe in renewable energy. We have to, as most towns have to do, have to do something. We can't let it pass us by. And I think Tiverton, in the last couple of years, I think has changed a lot. I think it's grown a lot. I think we are, shall I, and I dare, I really hate to say this, but I think we've become a little more business-friendly, so that hopefully that we can, with an open mind, understand the possibilities of renewable energies in our town. But again, I think it's something that this council really needs to speak to in depth as to what this town really wants to do. We know that protecting our environment is key. We know that what the town looks like visually is important to a lot of people in town. So we have to take that into consideration. So I think this is a great step. I think that we need to really have probably another follow-up meeting, and I know Mr. Plunkett has set forth an idea of a plan of action, which I really think that is a good start. But at this point, I will listen to members of the council if they have anything they would like to add.
I don't, Mr. President, I don't have anything really to add. What I've done is, as the speakers have been making their presentation, I've put one list together of questions, and I've put together another list, page two, answers. The only thing I've written there is six dash eight turbines. Here are the type of questions I think that I would have if we're going forward to explore this further. And let me break it down. Don't jump on one question, but, and I'll run through them. They're rather broad. And that is, I'd like to know exactly what the economic benefit is to what I'll call the water districts. I guess they're called fire districts, but I'll call them a water district. As I understand it, you would have some sort of lease arrangement. What would be the benefit to the North Tiverton Fire District? What would be the benefit to the Stonebridge Fire District? Then closely related to that and of more concern, I think, to the town council is then to ask ourselves, what's the economic benefit to the town? I can understand it would be taxes, but at some point, I'd like to hear what the dollars and cents are. Simply hearing that we'll have a benefit from taxes isn't enough at this point. At least give us some rough guideline as to where we could be going with the taxes and what the companies might be thinking about. Mr. Swatley indicated that the projects, the project that he was talking about might anticipate six to eight turbines. I would have a question as to, well, could this project, as Mr. Swatley or others would see it, be limited simply to the water districts? That is, does the industrial park have to be involved in this at all? And then if you say that, well, the industrial park shouldn't be involved, or that's the decision of the town council, the next question I would have is, again, what exactly is the benefit to the town at this point? I can see the benefit to the water districts if all six or eight turbines are within the water district properties, but what's the benefit to the town? I assume, again, it's the benefit would be the taxes. But how do you explain that to somebody who's not perhaps in the water district? Somebody who is not in the water district, what benefit do they get? They certainly wouldn't get a lower rate for their water. I assume the only benefit that they would receive is what everyone in town would receive generally, and that is the tax benefit. So we get back to that tax issue. Also, whether or not you're using industrial park property or anticipate using industrial park property, I'd still like to have a clear understanding of what the impact is on the industrial park. Now, if you can tell me that it's anticipated that perhaps one or two turbines would be on the industrial park, let me know where it's anticipated those turbines would be, how much property would be taken up, what percentage of the property, and how would that impact on any later development of the industrial park? I'm looking at this as a very naive layperson. For example, if the turbine falls, how much property is involved? Does it discourage somebody else from putting up a property adjacent to a turbine? I don't know the answers to that. But it would seem to me that whether the turbine is on the water district properties or it's on the industrial park properties, at least we have to think through the impact it might have on further development of those properties. I think that's basically it. What I would like to hear, and I think most of the taxpayers and residents would like to hear, is, okay, what is the benefit to me, short-term, long-term? What am I getting out of this in return for having towers in my town? And with whatever negatives might accompany that. Put us in a position as a town council to be able to tell residents what the impact will be for them, what benefits they're going to get for them. Let me give you a typical question that I'm getting, and it'll give you an idea as to where I'm coming from. If, for example, the benefit to the water district is the lease or the leases, how do I convince somebody in South Tiverton that there's some benefit to that person in having the, those turbines on the water district property, especially if they have a well in their backyard? Those are the type of practical issues I think we're going to have to address as a town council so that you have the blessings of the residents and taxpayers in this town if you're going to go ahead with a project like that. Those are the questions I would have. I don't think that they can all be, I'm sure they can't be addressed tonight, but in the short term, that's what I'd like to get answers to before I'm willing to get involved any further in trying to develop a project like this. Mr. Swatley?
At the appropriate time, either, sorry. I was going to say, either now or later, I could address a couple of those, but if it's okay with the board, shall I briefly answer?
Yeah, why don't you answer what you can.
The first thing I would say is that we are interested at the appropriate time approaching the town the appropriate time approaching the town as both a landowner and a permitter of the project. So we would be interested in talking with you all about hosting turbines. As a part of that process, we would definitely get much more detailed about where, how, how much, all of those things that we've been dealing with, with the fire districts. And, you know, we would be happy to start that process at, at a time which you see fit. Another thing to address is, you know, I think, and I've heard this before, that there is interest in solar, and I think that solar, solar can work very well with wind. It, you know, in, in the Northeast, it tends to produce a lot of, you know, of course, it produces a lot of power during the day, whereas the wind produces a lot of power during the evening. So there's a good offset, utilities like it. That, at the end of the day, would be more lease revenues and more tax revenues. It would allow for more production of renewable energy from a, from a given space. And Apex has capabilities in solar. We, we own a solar project in Colorado, and so, you know, again, at the appropriate time, if it came to the point where we put in, where we put forth a proposal for a project, we could, we could put forth a proposal that included both wind and solar. And as far as the, you know, getting more concrete about the economic benefits, I think that goes part and parcel with us getting more advanced in discussions about what exactly is possible as a project, because the size of the project, the nature of the project is going to directly drive what kind of benefits will be realized by the town. So, thank you.
Okay.
I have just a couple of questions, and I'm not sure who can answer them. Maybe not anybody, but they're a little more wanky. And we've talked in the past about the Energy Facility Siting Board, and I'm looking at you and Edith, kind of guide me a little bit through this. At what point or at all are they involved with any, any discussions or permitting for a project like this? I know we talked about this when we were discussing this, whatever it was called, on the, whatever the project was called, I can't remember.
Yeah, there's a minimum threshold.
Yeah.
Above that threshold, which I don't recall right at the moment, but above that threshold, they do have jurisdiction, they have concurrent jurisdiction for citing, and someone would go to them. They, they would consider opinions of the town at that point, but the town regulations wouldn't be binding. Below that threshold, the town would have exclusive jurisdiction.
And what is the threshold, is the potential energy production, or is it an acreage, or?
No, it's based on the megawatt.
Right.
Production of the, of the power plant, whatever kind of power plant it may be.
We're talking the state, just.
Yeah, the state of Rhode Island has an Energy Facility Siting Board. And when we discussed this last, it was with a very large, sort of multi-faceted energy production facility that included solar, it included geothermal, it included wind energy, natural gas production, and it was enormous. So there was no question that it had to go to the Facility Siting Board. Gary, do you know what the threshold is?
I know this project.
Is below it?
That would be below.
Oh, okay.
Because I, I think, I think the Ebeck one was the same thing. It was, yeah. It's under a threshold. It would have to go through the state.
Okay, so that's one question. The other is, we currently don't have a zoning ordinance that allows for commercial wind turbines to be sited in the town. Kate spoke about it a little bit earlier. And I have been on this board for about three years, and it feels like we have been about as close as, to getting those from the state as we are at any given point. So, and we haven't gotten them. It's always three months, three months, three months. And I've been on this board for three years. But my question is sort of, I, I see some members of the, the Planning Board, and Kate is here as well. At what point do we say, you know what, if we're going to seriously contemplate a wind energy facility in the town of Tiverton, we are going to have to roll up our sleeves and do some work towards creating an ordinance that not only addresses the concerns and the, the needs of the town, but also is, you know, more macrocosmic, that addresses sort of the unknowns that we, we would expect those state ordinances or state guidelines to address. Is there any consideration to, I mean, because for me, we're talking about something that we, we have a defined scope, and we have a defined timeline, but we can't get there until we even consider making it legal to build one of these things in the town of Tiverton. And right now, that currently is not the case. Gary?
Gary, why don't you come to the mic, just?
I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but.
Oh, because, you know, we are being televised.
Very, I'm as frustrated as anyone about that.
Yeah, no, certainly.
And it's gone on forever and ever. I think, I think the thing to say is, it would be preferable to write our own ordinance after they have their guidance, because it would not be a good thing if we wrote our own ordinance and there was some, you know, real difference from what they say. I mean, the other thing to remember is, that is only guidance. We can write, we can write our own ordinance right now if we wanted to.
Right.
But the, it would be better if we can, and if at some point in time, the council decides that we've got to move forward so that a project can proceed, we can write it. And all the studies that the statewide planning office did, and then down to URI, and the studies that are still ongoing, I guess, down there, all of that is public information. So we could still get very good, solid backup for writing an ordinance. So there's nothing, there's nothing really preventing that, other than the preference of, well, let them do their work first, and then we know we're not going to stray too far from what the state guidance is.
What concerns me is, the longer we wait to do anything, and the longer we wait to put a concrete plan into place, or to create an outline for our scope, and, you know, it's somewhat of a different situation from what, I'm going to look down, Mr., is it Wallenberg? All the municipalities, I think, that you spoke about were preemptively or were proactively addressing wind energy. We are sort of reactionary to proposals now, at this point, from private organizations. And so I don't think we've had the opportunity to, to define what it is exactly that this project, our project, would look like, because there is no our project. There is a, a possibility of a project that comes from outside, and we have to make a decision one way or the other on whether we're going to entertain, you know, putting, putting town property in, whether we're going to do about regulations and permitting and those sorts of things. And I presume that these tax, that these, these certificates, these energy certificates, and they're probably renewable tax credit type things, they're, they dollar-for-dollar tax credits, that they're sold to raise capital for construction or operation? Is that how they work, or?
I mean, there are, there are a couple of different incentives. The biggest one is the production tax credit, which is basically, it's a 2.2 cent per kilowatt hour tax credit. And it requires that you have a tax equity investor generally.
Yeah.
So that would be, I mean, in most cases, that's, that's a pretty limited number of, of banks that would do it. But, I mean, the short story is that the town of Tiverton would not be able to monetize those itself.
No, sure, but what, my, my point is that the, the developer, whoever, is going to be the beneficiary of those tax credits, and even if they do have a tax liability that can be offset, I imagine that they're going to hit a threshold where they're going to either have to sell tax credits, or depending on what, what type of capital stack they're putting together to raise the funds to construct these 50, 60 million dollar units. If we're dragging our feet on the sort of backs of saying, well, the state of Rhode Island hasn't created a viable plan for us to sort of fiddle with, tho, those opportunities go away or are reduced substantially, or, and I presume if there is a tax credit equity investor, they fluctuate, you know, cyclically, and we might not get it, or the developer might not get a dollar-for-dollar, it could be 70 cents, 80 cents, and then, then trickle down to the town benefit is reduced.
And that, that's exactly the point that I was trying to make.
Okay.
Was that the town has to be aware of these federal incentives, because, again, ultimately, you know, if the returns are smaller to the developer.
Yeah.
In whatever form of revenue that the town negotiates, again, whether it's a pilot payment or something else, it's going to be smaller. And, I mean, to your point about waiting for guidelines from the state, I, I really do think that you're, you're right on the money to say that that puts the city, or the town, in kind of a reactionary position. And as these tax incentives come and go and get renewed, or don't get renewed, you know, if the town doesn't have the ability to fairly quickly attract a project, you, you may just miss out on whatever tax incentive happens, happens to be in place at that moment.
Now, just give me some context for, you said 2.2 cents per kilowatt?
2.2 cents, the, there's also the option to take an investment tax credit, which is 30% of the value of the entire project.
Hang on a second. Let me just process. So 30% of the entire cost of the project could be a direct tax credit to the developer?
Yes.
Correct. What's 2.2 cents per kilowatt in, in everyday terms that I could understand as opposed, you know, when you're creating, you know, a capital?
Well, I mean, to give you an idea, for projects, some projects will take the production tax credit, and some will take the investment tax credit. So they're roughly equivalent. What we'll end up making or breaking it is how important the timing of capital is, how productive the site is. So if you, because one is based on kilowatt hour production, if you are in a site that has more wind, then that project will be more likely to take the, the 2.2 cents, because it's a production-based incentive. But roughly, they're somewhat equivalent to each other.
Okay. Great. Thanks very much.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Swatley, you had a, sorry.
Sorry, the EFSP is 40 megawatt threshold. 40 megawatts above is EFSP's jurisdiction.
Yeah, I was going to let you know I'd found that information.
Great.
10 megawatts for water power, but 40 megawatts for the electric.
And, Mr. Swatley?
I thought we were talking about considerably less than that.
Yeah. And just before we go, just for people out in the audience and in TV land, we keep talking about a pilot, that is payment in lieu of taxes, because I'm sure somebody's going to say, somebody's got a boat that's going to go up to the wind turbine? So, just so that a pilot is payment in lieu of taxes. Okay.
One of the things the town could do is to look at what other municipalities have done with their wind regs. Municipalities have been working hard on these for at least 12 years. I know another project I did in New York State, the wind, you know, the municipality, that was, you know, that was back 2004, 2005, so there weren't a whole lot of regs. And so they spent probably six to seven months formulating with consultants a, a supportable town law. But now you have, now you've got that track record of towns in Massachusetts and New York State. You could review some of those, you know, probably the towns that are more like Tiverton would be, would be more appropriate, and you can kind of get a sense of what other, you know, what other municipalities have done. And maybe that gives you a jump on waiting for the, for the, for the state. And then as far as the, let's see, the, the, yeah, well, for solar, that, that utilizes the, the investment tax credit, and that's available until 2016. Wind, right now, only utilizes the production tax credit, and that expires at the end of the year. However, there's a lot of talk that it'll be renewed. That's just to say, you know, I, I think it's important to stay current with federal, federal policy, but there's probably going to be a phase out of the production tax credit, or it's going to be replaced by some other instrument. So just to, just to give you a sense that I don't think we're, we're falling off the edge of the cliff at the end of this year.
Just to follow up on that, if, it seems just, when you, as a developer, and this is not, this doesn't have to be the Tiverton theoretical project, if, if, I mean, if I were a developer and I'm looking at the, by the end of the year, a 30% tax credit going, potentially going away, and let's just round it up to a $100 million project, that's $30 million that now I have to make up. I have a deficit of $30 million that I either have to put my own capital in, and I'm sure that's not an option, raise equity or debt, you know, some other form of mezzanine financing or something. How do you guys create your capital stack to deal with issues like that? I mean, $30 million, if we're talking about 30% of the total project cost, that is a huge number.
Yeah, it is a huge number. For, yeah, and for solar, it's that number. For wind, it's really going to be depend on the production, but it's a large number.
Yeah.
So how do we address that? A couple of ways. With this upcoming expiration of the production tax credit, you know, we have a number of projects that we're teeing up for construction. Not all will be finished by the end of the year, but the rules state that if you sink 5% of the project cost into the project, you get to safe harbor that. So that allows us to do, for example, a turbine order, and safe harbor the, the production tax credit, so that we can finish the construction, say, next year. So that's one of the ways we're dealing with it. The other ways is, you know, to continue to speak about the importance of growing the renewable industry, renewable energy industry in the United States at the federal level. The third is that the states have really taken a, a big lead in New England and New York in terms of policies supporting renewable energy. And so, you know, we'll have to see. I imagine, well, a couple of things will happen. One thing is turbine prices are coming down. Also, their efficiency is going up. So, so wind is starting to become what we call market parity. It can, it can go on a price, price-for-price basis with fossil fuels. And also, it doesn't have all the external costs of fossil fuels. That's one thing. The other thing is that as federal incentives decrease, which we expect them to do over time, so far, the political support in New England and New York has stayed strong, and our, our hope is that that fills some of that gap. So along with the states stepping up to the plate, and the cost of wind energy continuing to come down, that's our kind of forecast that the energy, that, that the industry will remain strong.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I have one question, I promise it'll be brief. Kate just left, but there are, I just wanted to know, because I, I haven't been to all the Planning Board meetings. Has the Planning Board discussed since the time that they decided to adopt a policy of sort of wait until we get some concrete information from the state, had discussed revisiting that at all? I mean, I see one of the Peters, or anybody, Rose is here.
I'm Peter Korf. I'm on your Planning Board. I also sit on Stonebridge Water Board, and I also sit on your Harbor Commission. We, Mr. Plunkett and myself, Peter Monas, were on the committee to do that rewrite. And I think we were on rewrite number seven or eight? Seven or eight. We turned it into the Planning Board, and the Planning Board kicked it around, and then ended up on the council's doorstep. About three months ago, I called Gary, and I asked him if he was interested to get together and, and revisit this, which he said he'd be happy to at any time. So, but I, I think that if we're waiting for the state, well, that could be two months or two years. But I'd be willing to revisit it, and I think Mr. Monas would, and I'm sure Gary would, would like to. We've taken in a lot of information on wind energy over the last year or so. It's, it's really to the council. If you give the task to the Planning Board, the Planning Board would make its designees go.
I mean, I think certainly it's worth a conversation of this body, because, you know, it's sort of one of those things, we're never closer to the, to the day we're going to build one of these things than we are today. And I can say that tomorrow, and the next day, and the next day, even if we are in measurable distance away from it. But I think it behooves us to at least be prepared for the day that it does come, or it, it presents itself to us, because we, we know from experience that being in a, in a position to react very quickly is, is often essential in these dealings. So that's just my two So that's just my two cents. Thank you.
With our moratorium, and I don't know where we're at with that, if it's perfected every six months, I would have to ask Kate that, or maybe the town council most.
I believe it's an effect until an ordinance. It's contingent upon an ordinance. So it's an effect until.
React on this. I had a couple of comments, if I may, for Mr. Lambert. As far as being on the water board, we're a Stonebridge quasi-municipal entity, and we are nonprofit. So you asked how the water rates would be affected, or how it would benefit somebody in South Tiverton or North Tiverton, or in the Stonebridge district. So being with nonprofit, if we have sources of revenue coming into, I don't want to speak necessarily through North Tiverton, but into North Tiverton or Stonebridge, naturally, because we're nonprofit, it's gonna keep the water rates down. I think that's easy. The people in.
Could I ask, and this is gonna show total ignorance, but could I ask roughly how many households are in the North Tiverton Water District and how many are in the Stonebridge District?
Stonebridge, I believe, has a little over 1,000, about 1,100.
1,100. And North Tiverton, I think, has just over 3,000 accounts, mostly all residential.
So a little over 4,200 accounts in the town?
We only have, if I remember the last count, we only have 5,700 residents in.
Households.
Households, households, rather.
Every house and every business that's in either district, pretty much.
No, it's a good percentage. It's a good percentage of the town.
We thought, when you look at the land of the town, the industrial park, for instance, you have a little bit of land up in the corner, because it went through me in front of the planning board, that is not only in the watershed, but it is wet in general, which could go to either, it's part of Stonebridge's property. And as many of the council members know, Stonebridge has been more than generous giving land to the town, whether it was for schools or soccer, or for your septic, or so forth. And we don't really ask much in return. So the land of the Stonebridge District, it never will be developed. It's always going to be watershed. And we thought, we put it through the members to see if, how we would feel about having, and we were weighing this, having wind energy, getting benefits for the Stonebridge District to keep the water rates down, and the impact of the development would be around the pond. And we've been debating this and working with Apex, and maybe possibility, another company at some point, if the Apex wind doesn't work out, to make the impact of the watershed as absolutely negligible as possible, saving as many trees and what we do disturb replanting in green.
Thanks, Pete.
Thanks, Pete.
At some point, though, Mr. Corr, what I'm hoping to do is really get that to dollars and cents. That is, how is that, whatever the terms are of the lease agreement, how is that gonna work out as far as lower rates for somebody in North Tiverton, for somebody in Stonebridge? I mean, is it $10 a year, or is it $100 or $200 a year? I'd like to really have a grasp of some of those numbers.
That's simple. All it's going to do is mean that we don't have to raise the rates of water. The problem with water right now is enormous cost to treat the water. The copper sulfate, we're buying it, we're buying $8,000 a ton last year. And a year ago, it was $5,000. Our rates keep going up, the rates of electricity keep going up, and we.
Well, I.
We have pretty good rates.
This sounds, this'll be very simplistic, but I think the benefit to the people in the water district would simply be, what are you getting every year on the lease? And divide that by the number of accounts you have. I don't care how you use the money to buy sulfur or whatever else you have to buy, I mean, that's gonna, that'll give me an idea as to what the number is, what the benefit is to a typical household.
Yeah, we could do that for Stonebridge.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just have questions as to what would be good next steps in terms of keeping the dialogue moving forward.
Well, I think number one, I'm going to check our calendar for August and see if we can plan another meeting. I would like to have a meeting with the fire districts and this council in order to understand exactly where they are, the amount of land involved, whether or not the industrial park comes into play, so that we're at least, we are all on the same page in that particular area. At the same time, I want the council to be prepared to discuss whether or not we should move forward on an ordinance. And the only thing that does concern me is, it's unfortunate that the only example we have is across the water. And so that kind of leaves a funny taste in most of people's Tiverton's mouths, and they don't want to be stuck like Portsmouth. So I want to make sure that that is another consideration that we discuss.
Could I make a suggestion, Mr. President? When we were trying to come up with some proposals for the landfill, everybody on the committee was given the names of five or six communities that had landfills, and we were supposed to contact their city, their town administrator or DPW administrator. Maybe Mr. Swatley can make that job easier for us, and if this is readily available, could we identify communities in this New England area with a population of approximately 15,000, 20,000 people, where we might be able to make the contacts and get an idea as to what their experience has been?
Wait, you mean communities of this size that are hosting?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. When we had a landfill, this is basically the job, one of the jobs I had, it was call up the DPW people in Gloucester and find out how they're doing with their landfill, what they're doing, what the pays, you throw, how that works, that type of thing. And actually, it was very helpful. These people were very helpful because they had the experience. If you could give us the names of some of the local communities in this area, I think that we could break that down and make some contacts with the people in those communities.
And I think Mr. Wollenberg Plus has some readily available information also.
You might start with Coventry. They're doing two 1.5-megawatt turbines, one through the distributed generation standard program and one net meter. So they actually, they kind of have experience with every type of incentive the state of Rhode Island is using right now. And construction is just beginning on that project, so. And I can also provide other counts.
Okay. I would also, if it's appropriate, respectfully request that Andy maybe review the most recent lease proposal we have and maybe put together a pager for us. No?
What lease proposal do we have?
We have a lease proposal from Apex Wind.
Yes.
We have two of them, in fact.
Yes.
Okay. That's from quite a while ago.
Yes.
Well, not that long ago. October, maybe?
Okay.
I think probably. Mr. Wollenberg?
If I could address, or maybe before my time at Apex, we did submit a lease review to the town.
Yes.
What we could do is we could make the most recent lease available that we've been negotiating with the fire districts to the town to kind of keep, we've learned a lot about Tiverton in the process. We could also supply that. That would be the latest agreement.
Mr. Swatley, then, could you send that to the town clerk?
Sure.
Who in turn will get it to our town solicitor?
Okay.
Thank you.
And then we can, because I do remember reading it, I do remember the words on a page. I do not remember what any of them meant, or, so.
I think for our next meeting, Nancy, if you'll put it on the agenda, for us to look at the calendar and pick a date for another workshop regarding this, and I respectfully ask the fire districts if they can attend. We'll try to work out some dates and see if they're all workable. And also, Mr. Plunkett, if you could be there. And then we can move forward from there.
Mr. President, could you make a joint meeting of the planning board and the council?
Well, yours has to be a meeting.
Whatever. Because I think she gets a public.
Well, I think we need to figure out, you know, before we actually have a public meeting, because there are a lot of issues that we have to look at as a town that we've got to clarify. And I know with the planning board, you have to have a meeting meeting. You can have a workshop, so.
As a planning board, it's a reality that's in public, thinking about this. First of all, just this discussion here tonight, sort of, it's like a new town council. And it seems to be some doubt about consensus, you know, of a direction you want to take. First of all, I think you should get a consensus if you want to use, go direction to renewables and stuff.
Well, I think, I think that's what this meeting is for, number one. Number two, if we weren't interested in renewables, we wouldn't be having a workshop. So, but, let me finish. That's why we need to work to decide and get a format and a matrix of how we want to move forward. And I think it's a little early right now to bring everybody into the fray, because we have, as a council, have to make that determination of what portion, what we're looking for first.
I think that's the first step. I think the council should go.
Right, right. So that's why we need to continue in another workshop to clarify, get more information. And then once we go there, then we'd be more than happy to have a joint session with the planning board and/or a public hearing.
Can we just clarify? I'm sorry. Can we just, the meeting with the water districts, an executive session, then, is that what you're talking about?
No.
So that you can discuss the?
In a workshop.
Okay.
I mean, I assume that stuff is all public.
Well, I don't think their lease and financial terms with Apex are. That's why I'm asking.
Do we need to?
They're still negotiating with them.
Okay.
So it's up to you. I'm just trying to clarify.
Yeah, we can put that in as well.
I mean, I will voice my displeasure with workshops of any type and prefer special meetings with the opportunity to vote on things, to take action and have executive session, but it stands as always.
Mrs. Shabitt? All right. I just have a few comments as I've listened to the discussion tonight. And the discussion has been very positive, and it's been tailored that way to bring out all the benefits, especially the cost benefits to a town or from a tax perspective or whatever. But I think there's another side to this that hasn't been discussed. And a lot of that, a lot of information came out at the public hearing on June 14, 2010, when we were discussing the ordinance. Actually, it was prior to my time on the council, but I did attend the public hearing. And there was some documentation provided, and I think there was a presentation by a gentleman from the Marin Rock Court area that had a lot of information on noise, shadow flicker, and the impacts to human health. And I think that's very important for the, this council to be brought up to speed on those aspects. Also, it's been presented that there was a 2011 questionnaire and that the responses were 990 responses that were pretty much favorable. But when I look to the amount of people that are in this town, if you just use 15,000 people, that's only 6% to 7% that responded to that survey. And I don't think you can make a judgment on 6% to 7% when that's not a very high percentage of the population to respond to this. And I think that might be a learning exercise, that maybe people didn't respond because they know nothing about wind power. And we probably need to educate the public on the different aspects of it. Until it basically impacted a neighborhood, that information started coming forward. To continue with educating the council and the public, I did watch a documentary, a wind power documentary called Windfall. It's a story about Meredith, New York, where wind turbines came to the area, and it basically split the town. And you really, really need to see the movie. There's a lot of, there's a cost to wind energy. And it's not just the cost that, the beneficial cost, i.e. taxes, but there's human costs, and there's also economic costs. And I don't think those economic costs have been discussed. With the advent of renewable energy, there's a cost to that that gets spread amongst the ratepayers. So you're paying, you will be paying more money in your, on your electric bill as residents, as well as commercial businesses will have an increased cost associated with using renewable energy. And I think deep water is a definite example that the energy costs for that are going to be crippling to the economy in Rhode Island. But nobody talks about that. And again, just to focus on, on some of the, focused on the positive aspects, and we've heard one unsuccessful implementation story in Portsmouth. But there are others. There are, you mentioned a lot of towns in Massachusetts, and there's others. There's Falmouth, who proposed to put in three wind turbines. They constructed one, half-constructed the next one, and then the people in town voted to dismantle them because of the impact to their environment, to the people in the town. Fairhaven is going through the same situation. Duxbury, they proposed to build one wind turbine in Duxbury. The people in town revolted against that. And then also, I believe there's some, as far as Rhode Island is concerned, I believe there's issues down in Charlestown. So I think it's, there's, for every successful story, there's probably another unsuccessful story. And I think we need to have both sides of the story. And even as far as this town is concerned with Sandy Woods, we did have Mr. Blossom come to the council meeting in our open forum to share the impacts of his wind turbine to his egg and milk production from his chickens and goats. So I think there's not only a human impact, economic impact, there's probably a lot more impacts than we've discussed tonight. And I think it deserves equal time. As far as wind energy is concerned, there's a lot of information that's presented, wind energy is an abundant resource. It is an abundant resource when the wind is blowing. It is not a 24/7 resource. It cannot be relied upon to handle a base load or even a peak load. There's no way to store the excess energy that's produced. It just goes into the grid, and we still need the natural gas plants and coal power plants to provide the base load that's needed to run our homes and our businesses. So in effect, it's unreliable, it's inconsistent. And we all know that, because the wind does stop. As far as wind energy, reducing our dependence on imported fuel, I believe our percentage is less than 5% of our national energy is from imported fuel. So I think that's a little misleading, and that really needs to be firmed up. Most of our energy production in the U.S. is from coal, followed by natural gas. And a very small percentage of it is from oil or renewables, a very small percentage. As far as, wind energy does not boost the air and the water, that's fine unless you consider the possibility of a, the risk of a catastrophic failure. the possibility of a, the risk of a catastrophic failure of that wind turbine. And that does occur. And lastly, wind energy provides economic growth to local economies and added tax revenue. There is a cost to this energy and that cost, you see it on your bill. You're paying additional costs for, you can sign up, check the box and say, yeah, you want to support green energy and you want to pay an additional charge. Well, that, once you stop putting these projects on the grid, there's no option. You're paying. Everybody's going to be paying. And the only ones that are not going to be paying, if it's a net metering, is your municipals. They will get a break on the, on the power costs, but in effect, the cost of that is then turned over to the residents and the businesses. And we do enough to hurt business in Rhode Island and I'm not sure that this is the way to go if we want to continue to have a prosperous Rhode Island. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. I would put it on the agenda and we can either have a special meeting or another workshop.
Can you check the board?
Yes, and see what dates, what dates they're available. Well, if we want to discuss financial matters, yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right. Anything else from the council?
I just have two quick comments. I was fortunate enough at the end of June to actually travel across country by automobile. And I believe I may have seen the Oklahoma development that Mr. Swatley might have been talking about earlier. Was it near Oklahoma City by any chance? Mrs. Swatley?
West of Oklahoma City.
Yeah, okay. So, off Route 70?
I believe so. You know, I haven't been directly involved in it, so.
And there's a little large development near the Amarillo area in Texas as well on the same route. So, driving through there and also Minnesota, I literally saw thousands of these things. I mean, thousands. And the development wasn't two or three here and there. It was on, it went on for miles and miles and miles. And driving through those areas, Minnesota was probably the most populated that I saw. And when I mean by populated, there was a house every couple of miles, I think. I think that would constitute a town, probably Minnesota, compared to a small Rhode Island, which is probably the size of their town. And I noticed there were some of them that were running and some of them that weren't. And one thing I could think of is what a task this must be to maintain all of these and is it one company that actually owns all of these? And is it the company that owns these or is it the state or is it the town? I think what the comment you made about Portsmouth is whether or not the town owns it or the company owns it, if the company goes out of business, who takes it down? They're not going to. So, I think that's one issue we have to look at. This is a high overview. And the other comment I was going to make is, you know, the problem I have with wind turbine energy is the length of the contract being 15, 20 years. I mean, we mentioned that the turbines get more efficient as time goes on. So, like, one question would be for a high level point of view is, is there something written into the contract for upgrading the components of the turbine to latest technology specifications? I'm sure the housing may not change very much. I'm sure the components would. And also, maybe down the line, they might invent better wind energy. I don't know, but that might be beneficial to us. That was a bad joke, sorry. See, it was painful. And I have probably a lot more questions, more based on the specifics of the project, but that's not appropriate this time, so that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Aruda. Anyone else?
Mr. President, really quick, just some closing comments. I agree with Councilor Chabot that we absolutely need to have a fair and balanced dialogue on all of this and make sure that we have all sides represented. I think it's only through that process that we can make the best decision for how to move forward. You know, I certainly don't want to get into ideological kind of differences on this, but, you know, just two brief comments. I think in response to the, to the rates being more expensive, that is absolutely the case, I think. What's important to note, though, is that, you know, oil and gas companies continue to be highly subsidized by the federal government, which helps to drive down the rates there, which creates somewhat of an unlevel playing field for renewable energies to try to get a foothold to move forward. And then, the only other thing is that, you know, I think we're at a point as a society where it behooves us to try to think long term. And that's difficult often to do so. And, you know, the ability for a community or a society to have the foresight to think ahead and know that at some point in time fossil-based fuels will run out. Will that be in our lifetime? Probably not. Certainly, there are proponents of peak oil that think otherwise. But at some point in time, we're going to have to figure this out. And, you know, it behooves us to try to plant a seed in which, to try to nurture that next chapter. And, you know, I would just encourage us to not only think short term, but to also think long term in what sort of legacy, you know, we want to leave, not only to residents here, but generations to come. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this point, I'd like to thank everyone who participated this night. I thank you for your insight and your information. Just know that this council is taking everything under consideration. And so, we will continue to discuss this and hopefully be able to move forward relatively quickly and have an understanding of what the town would like to do. Yes, Mrs. Black?
Excuse me, one second. I'll be very quick. As you go forward, green energy is valuable and important. We want to look to the future, but as you look into this, please remember it's not just the neighbors, it's the over 1,500 kids that are right there, no matter where they live in the town, the high school, middle school and ranger will be there. So, if there's flicker or if there's a fall zone or whatever that is, please try to remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And if there's nothing else.